Second, Commissioner Fuller to sit down. So we are item three, approval of minutes from regular meeting on September 24th, 2024, and special meeting on October 14th, 2024. Hope everyone had time review.
Move to approve the minutes.
Approve, motion by Commissioner Burris. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gates. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor for the minutes approval of September 24th and October 14th say aye. Aye, all who suppose. Thank you. Commissioner no comments. I will start with Commissioner Gates.
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Vino.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Burris.
It's nice to see a lot of faces again.
And Commissioner Fuller. Okay, for myself, thank you for attending tonight. I do want to thank everyone for everything, really. I've noticed that it's been a tough year, but I know also reading everything that comes from occasional highlights. Thank you for the cruise and everyone else. So public comments, please state your name and address. For the record, limited comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any public comment? Seeing and hearing none. Moved into item six, Commissioner Committee Reports. Anything to report? Nothing. Thank you. Item seven, Strategic Bridge Plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Seth's here tonight to give us an update on the strategic plan and the progress we've made in working towards the objectives and goals that were set for in the strategic plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Seth.
Chief, thank you very much. And Commissioners, thanks a lot. The district's been working on towards this two-year strategic bridge plan, and it was adopted by the leadership and by the Commissioners back in February 2023. It had kind of two really big objectives. The first was to prepare the district from a funding perspective for the future. And the second was to implement a series of objectives that came out of an organizational health survey that the district conducted in 2022. It broke down all the work into like 20 objectives. And, and the district's been really working on meeting those objectives, putting in the work to get that work accomplished since, since February of 2023. And I'm going to kind of give an update on the overall progress, some of the major areas of the plan, and where it stands as, as the plan sort of comes to its natural conclusion. Um, as a, as a refresher, you know, the plan had these big pillars in it, bigger areas of work, funding, to, to move from a funding model that was not keeping up with, with the demands of the district. Another area was increasing accountability just within the district and within both administration and in operations, bolster leadership and have more tools for leadership within the district, and finally improving internal communication between parts of, of the fire service here. This is kind of an eye chart. We actually track work all the way down to detail objectives. And we've been reporting out as work's been accomplished really over the last several quarters. What I'm going to do is not, not go through each one of these objectives, but really talk about highlights of accomplishments and some areas that are still open. One of these been important about this strategic plan that I understand has been somewhat historically unique for the district is that across operations and administration, this plan got done. Like, it wasn't just a strategic plan that sat on the shelf and wasn't opened and looked at. This really drove work that people across the district performed. And it's important to recognize people did this work over and above their day jobs, you know, which in, in a, in a, in a very busy fire service, people took time beyond their work to get some of this new work done. And finally, it's, I think, pleasing to say that the sizable majority of the strategic objectives were actually met and implemented. There are a few still open that we're going to forecast probably get complete by the end of the year. And there's some, there's some things that we're going to defer, and we'll talk about what those are. Big key accomplishments. As you know, in August, citizens approved the fire benefit charge. A very big lift of the strategic bridge plan was to support the marketing and the outreach to, to educate the community on why a fire benefit charge is a more sustainable way to support the funding of the fire service. And so it was a big accomplishment. A lot, a lot of work went into developing materials to explain to the community how this funding change would be different than the lid lifts and levies that had been historically used. So it's very, very pleasing to sort of see that effort, earn the confidence, you know, of, of the voters and the citizens here. Another big piece was on, not so much on the finance side, but improving accountability within a district was to bring back and formalize an annual employee evaluation process internally. And so work was done to, 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 from leadership and operations and from administration to define what that, what that process was going to look like, and then to roll it out. And now it takes place, as I understand, on sort of the higher anniversary date on a rolling basis annually for everybody in, in, in the fire department here. One of the things that came out of that organizational health survey two years ago was it can be a little hard to, to get access to information, like to get to forms and to get decisions on, on workflows that people just need to do their jobs. So this summer, an online portal was rolled out to try to consolidate and make for a one-stop shop, a place where employees can go to access information and also complete and some, fill out some forms. Getting this launched was a big body of work, and now it's going to be this living thing that needs to be maintained and updated. An area also that came out of the organizational health survey two years ago was can there be greater transparency in promotion practices? And so some pieces were put in place in the early part of this year to increase that transparency. Finally, there was, you know, an area in saying, hey, we want better communication between parts, parts of operations and administration. And so I think a win in the, in the strategic bridge plan work has improved communications, especially in these battalion chief highlights that were created. And that was put in, I think, last year. And, and from what I understand, that's been now in place and, and, and ongoing. There are some areas that not everything could get done. There, there are two areas where there just really wasn't the funding. And remember, we're talking about, you know, the funding in 2024 and 2023 to build a business and planning like a, like a, like a function, like somebody's job or, or pieces of people's job to formalize business and operations planning. And, and really a project management piece to go along with that. This is a, hey, we, we want to do this, but you know, do we have the money to assign people that and kind of build a discipline around that? So decision was, hey, you know, let's, let's defer it and let's revisit it when we do a strategic planning process next year to see if that's still something that's really important internally. Another area that was deferred was that, going back to that, that 2022 survey, one of the things that was heard in the survey was, hey, is there more battalion chief presence possible? Can companies see the battalion chiefs more? And so the strategic plan said, hey, you know what? Let's do some analysis. Like, let's look at that, you know? And work was done last year to look at some peer agencies. Like, what's their ratio of battalion chiefs to companies? And, you know, the, the results of that were interesting because it wasn't like it was conclusive. Like, you look at peer agencies and their geographic spread is different, the demands and their responses are different. What also happened while that analysis was kind of being looked at is this sort of the question said, hey, overall, as the population has grown in the district, don't we really want to evaluate and kind of understand the overall staff increases that might be needed to increase capacity, increase capacity and increase resources? And so the, the, where we're kind of at in this analysis is saying, hey, let's pause on the, you know, B C and B C to company ratio, and maybe the, the big thing to really look at, and would have to be looked at systematically, and then of course funded, is expanding the, the district's capacity to respond. What's next? Um, there are some areas that are, that are still open and to wrap up. One, one of the, one of the areas that came out of that survey was we want people to know where they can go to get training or resources as they want to have greater leadership opportunity. And so an, an assembly of that information is, is being pulled together. And this, this is an item that there's still some work on that, that we'll see how it progresses by the end of the year. And then, of course, you know, the, the, you all will make a decision about kicking off a, a process for a strategic plan that could go out for the next couple of years. And obviously, it's, it's now able to be funded as your fire district is funded in a very different way with the passage of the bridge plan. You all have been really quiet, and maybe I've talked too much. So I should just kind of stop and say, are there any questions?
Questions?
Response capacity.
How do we, how do we characterize response? Capacity?
Well, our response capacity is how many units do we have available to go on calls? How many stations do we have properly located? How many firefighters do we have staffing each piece of apparatus? You know, what is our, what is our plan for potential growth beyond the immediate need? So it's the totality of what we would traditionally think of. But then it's also elements like mobile integrated health and behavioral health. It's also elements of community risk reduction. And how do we, how do we fold the elements of community risk reduction into our planning process so that we're not just a reactionary response model, but we're a proactive response model? So there's a lot of elements that go into defining that. And that's the goal of the strategic plan in 2025 is mapping out where we want to be for the next five to 10 years. And what are the necessary steps to grow into that type of department?
Certainly already identified the units, the stations that have a very high call volume, which was leading to a lot of stress, a lot of physical issues. And but that's an obvious thing. And you, you deal with staff increases, then you can, then you can have more stations in the right place. I can see it's a very broad thing. It will take the strategic plan to do it.
Yes, we need to be intentional because anywhere we put a fire station, it's going to be there for a long time. So we need to make sure that we're very thoughtful in how we grow the organization. And you are correct, our firefighters are very busy, probably to the saturation point. And so we need to be mindful of those things that we can do that take some pressure off of the response units. And a big part of that is community risk reduction. And how do we engage the public and actually defer some of those 911 calls, prevent them from happening?
We just ran over 20,000 calls, so we'll finish the year probably at another record.
Yes, we probably will.
Commissioner Burris?
Um, yeah. So like in the strategic pillars, I mean, it's, it's all good stuff and everything, but like, how do we actually measure it? That's always, I think, the, the difficult thing. And we have these great ideas, but how do we truly measure whether we got to them? And so then I, I go to the next page of implementation status. And even then, there's, there's some, how did we measure that it was complete? Some of it's easy. Well, we passed the service benefit charge. But, you know, improving communications or fostering trust, how do we measure that?
Yeah. And I, I think when we, when we devised the plan, we were mindful that some things are nebulous, right? And so we tried to write the objectives to, to, instead of saying improve trust or improve accountability, have either a process or a milestone or a deliverable. Let me tell you where I'm going here. So for instance, accountability. So the, when the strategic plan was developed, the idea was, hey, let's actually bring back an evaluation process. And so that people are, are being evaluated, not in a punitive way, right? But in a supportive way by their, by their management, right? That's kind of looking at how well they're performing. And, and let's record that. Like, let's actually, you know, have a, have a process that records it so that you can say, we're, we're, as a district, we're putting in a measurable way that we measure our accountability, accountability that would be accountable, obviously, the standards of the job. And then it also can be used to say, hey, here's, here's someone that could be ripe for further development or for leadership opportunity. And that's a way to try to, try to make that accountability more measurable. You know, another way in the communication, you're right, just to say, well, communicate better. That's, that's kind of tough. So the, the formalizing of these battalion chief interactions, these B C highlights was a sort of a concrete step, you know, that could be taken that says, hey, let's kind of formalize this piece of communication. Let's try it out. Let's put it in place. There's another area deeper in the strategic plan to say, hey, let's set some guidelines about how we communicate information. Let's get those guidelines documented. And then, and then it's something that supervisors can follow as a way to say, hey, let's make this more, things we can measure in terms of behavior as opposed to a nebulous idea.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we can't go through all 20 of these things. We could, but I don't think we need to. Um, I guess just in the future, you know, we've got, you know, status and responsible objective. Maybe one more of how, one more column of how did we measure that we are now considering it complete? Because is it? Because like you said, I like, we're nebulous. Some of them are really hard to. And there's also nothing wrong with just admitting that, you know what, we really can't measure that. Kind of the measurement guy. I like to, okay, we say it's complete, but why do we think it's complete? Just maybe on our next one.
As I remember, some of the documents, there were some specifics under each of those. Each, each of these objectives, there were some specific things that were outlined. Maybe another, another column or another table that breaks out some of those. So you can see, yeah, that's what we accomplished. And then you can, I think you can at least see what was attempted and in possible specific groups of these. And spend a little bit of time explaining them after we've seen them and have, give, give some feedback on those specific tasks or accomplishments that deemed it completed. And that obviously take a longer meeting than we have. And, but it may be another meeting or a special meeting before we conclude the year to flesh out a little bit more, or you can at least qualitatively understand what, what those specific things were done. Would that, would that help you?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So I think everyone was leaning down to the benchmarks really, right? So my question was to the nebulous stuff and the things that aren't tangible to measure. You have your key accomplishments on there. Did you, are you looking to review those as you complete those for next time?
To revisit? I want to understand the question, to revisit work underway or?
Now, the, the key accomplishments you have down here, do you have listed?
Yeah.
Is there a review process for those later on to see if they're still working? What benchmarks are you using? Like, even the key components for the promotional practices? Because I'm not sure to use. And how do you know it's, you know, next year, is it sustainable? Is it going to work?
That's a, that's a very good point. And, you know, in, in some of these where the goal of the strategic plan is to sort of implement something, you, you kind of get it to the point that you launched it, and then you would have to go back. And so say, in the, in transparent promotion practices, you probably have to go back in a future year and say, hey, are we still following these that were put in place?
That's right. Yeah.
Or what do they look like? What do those promotional practices look like? There's mention that they had been changed. And there's some, since we started the bridge plan, what are those practices? What, what improvement was, was made?
Are you asking, are you asking specifics? I got it, Kev. Are you asking specifically what the change was? Or are you asking in general?
In general, what, or either way, but in general, it was enough to keep me happy.
So just broad strokes, participating in a larger promotional process with other agencies, having subject matter experts help develop the tests and the testing materials and the process, having outside evaluators from other agencies participate in the valuation process. And so it takes the, it creates more objectivity in the testing process and reduces the opportunity or the chance is probably a better word, the chance that there could be some subjective scoring or some subjective bias within the process because more people are taking the same test and it's a larger sample size. And the evaluators for the process, while there is still some contractual obligations that we fulfill, mostly speaking, are from outside the organization. And so you kind of have an opportunity to be evaluated by somebody that doesn't know you for the last 25 years and may know all the good and all the bad about you. So that, in broad strokes, that's what we were able to accomplish.
It's, it's more than just a written test.
Yes.
And, but it's an actual, on the, on, loose on the ground, can I do that? Can they do that?
Yes.
And, but, and, and then relying on some of the other agencies that we, that we know, now that's probably the correct, that we know can evaluate well and have good practices themselves, so they can.
It's all, it's all zone three agencies and all of the evaluators get training as part of the testing process.
And is all that written down somewhere?
Yes, I believe it is all written down. And to, to answer Chair Barusa's question about do we evaluate, we did evaluate after the first time we changed, and we made a few minor changes. And our, our process is written down in a couple of different places, our internal documents, some HR documents and contractual obligations. So the, the process and the basic expectations are spelled out.
That was good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to item eight, F B C presentation.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, Seth.
Director Ganem is going to present a, a presentation on the F B C, the fire benefit charge this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. Commissioner Burris, one thing we can measure to your point is the F B C. That was one of the, the major objectives in the strategic plan, and we accomplished it. It's been something that this district has been trying to achieve for many, many years. And we're finally there. So we are required every year to do a presentation and set the F B C amount. It's required by R C W 5226230. You can correct me if I'm wrong or incorrect on that, Eric. And this is going to be, this is our first time doing this, obviously. So we're going to kind of two-part it. Tonight, we're just going to give a brief overview of the F B C reminder for everybody. We're going to give an estimate of what the F B C looks like. And then when we have the special meeting in November, November 13th is currently what we're looking at, we will present the exact amount to the board and the board will pass a resolution that will get sent to King County establishing the F B C amount. So a little bit of history for us. We passed primary election this year, overwhelming public support. We appreciate it. Thank you, voters, 65.28%. It's effective January 1st, 2025 for a period of six years. F B C is collected in April and October of, along the lines of normal property tax collections. And we join the list of our neighbors in the region that have had the fire benefit charge in place for years. So this is what sustainable funding looks like. Come next year, we will establish a new two-part funding system authorized under R C W 5226, referred to as the fire benefit charge. Our total annual fire assessment is the dollar per thousand plus the F B C. That's what we will collect from our residents. F B C basics. So as we know, you've seen all the literature that we put out at AUGMEN standard property tax collection, which is typically set at $1.50 per thousand. When you have an F B C in place, it drops to a dollar per thousand. The F B C amount can total up to 60% of our total operating budget. The fee is based on a number of resources necessary and the risk on each property allows for the same level of service despite outside factors as determined by the Board of Fire Commissioner. So easy one to look at is economic situations. When there are reductions in property taxes, the board can maintain or adjust the fire benefit charge to level revenues to maintain the service level to the community. Huge sustainable aspect of the F B C. It does provide for exemptions under R C W 5218. And the formula is based on fire flow, the resources required to deliver the fire flow and risk profile, which typically includes square footage, building classifications, hazards, et cetera. We are currently working on our 2025 budget, and we are estimating that the F B C amount will equate to 38% of our budget. If you recall, December of 2023, we did a presentation on the F B C when the board gave us the green light to move forward on it. We had done a little bit of research on what our neighbors typically fall in, in terms of what the F B C amount is. And it's typically the mid 30s to the low 40 percentile. We estimated based off of King County data at the time that we would be looking at 36 to 38% for the F B C, and we're coming in right at that 38%. What does the process look like? So in the fall, the board sets the total benefit charge. That's what will happen at the next meeting. The charges apportioned throughout the properties within the fire district's jurisdiction. So Des Moines, Federway, unincorporated King County, parts of unincorporated King County. We will notify the county treasurer of the charges to be included, and they will be added on the annual tax statements. Property owners will receive a notice of the benefit charge in January, so we will be busy in December getting that information ready. And then the property owners are afforded the opportunity to appeal during a petition period, which we are currently looking at setting late January to early February. Once all of that happens, the information is sent to the county and and, uh, residents receive their F B C bills, um, prior to April and October. So for twenty twenty-five, our estimation is that the F B C amount will not exceed nineteen million dollars. Currently it's based, it's based off of a percentage of your operating budget. And right now that number is about eighteen, seven, seven, something. So we, um, do not expect staying within the range that we told the taxpayers and the voters that we'd be at. We don't expect that range to, um, go beyond the thirty-eight percent nor nineteen million dollars. Okay. So the fire levy, we get our tax assessment, uh, projections every week from the county. Last year, we collected, uh, forty-one million in tax revenue from the dollar fifty. And, uh, in twenty twenty-five, A Vs have gone up. As you can see, twenty-seven point four nine five billion. In twenty twenty-four, projection is twenty-nine point two eight seven billion. Uh, so A Vs are up, but when you account for the fact that we dropped to a dollar, you see the levy, projected levy amount is twenty-nine million. So you see that reduction from the forty-one million down to the twenty-nine million. So, um, A Vs, a couple of notes, um, A Vs are up five percent in South King fires jurisdiction. Uh, this is more than double what was projected in, uh, December of last year when we ran our projections. At that time, A Vs were projected to be at about two percent. And right now they're about five point two five percent. So that's changed the numbers for, uh, regular tax levy. Um, but even with that consideration, uh, the projected tax collection drops twenty-eight point ninety percent. That's the, the third part of the dollar falling off. So that equates to about a twelve million dollar reduction on the dollar. Um, and then another notable thing is the maintenance and operations levy expires at the end of this year. So that's one thing that we shared with the voters. Um, that was three point seven five million per year. So when you take a look at the twelve million and the three point seven five, you're fifteen point seven five million in those two alone. So you can see how the F B C makes up that difference. This is a, uh, chart that actually shows what the calculations are based off of the fire benefit charge formula. I'm not going to get into the details. It's part of the presentation. If you want to go and look at it later, you can. Um, but this is, um, for this first year, we're mirroring what our partners, what our neighbor agencies are doing in terms of their F B C calculations. Any questions?
Do the property owners, uh, always take a big bark store? And, uh, have they been informed what's, what's coming?
Um, well, besides the fact that we were on the ballot and all of the publications that we put out, um, no, but they will be. Um, we will send out notices, uh, we have a plan to send out postcards. December, end of December-ish. Yeah, we're preparing them in December to be sent out in January. So everybody will get notices early January.
And the increase will be, and there will be a significant increase for them.
Uh, the rates for commercial versus residence are different. Um, I don't know. I won't, I can't speak to significant, but there are different rates for commercial versus residential.
You said something about there's an ability to challenge, used a different word, I think.
Petition.
Petition. Um, do we have any idea from some of our neighbors that have had it going on? Percentages and, and how you deal with that?
Um, I wouldn't say percentages. I would say that, uh, we expect based off of the feedback from our partners that have instituted an F B C that we expect in the first year, there will be challenges and petitions and questions. And once it becomes normal and trusted, um, those will taper off. You're always going to have a handful, uh, but we do expect, um, to have some challenges this first go around. And as an example, one of the things that we looked at was, and this is why we have Cheyenne and, and our data team, Kelsey and everybody behind the, the finance side of it is making sure that that King County data is accurate. Uh, but you could get a, um, postcard from us that says your square footage, uh, your, your home is five thousand square feet. And it may be eighteen hundred square feet. So that's a very easy thing for somebody to petition, say, this is not correct. Once we get into the exemptions and the risk factors, that, that's another aspect of it. But probably square footage is going to be one of the ones that would be petitioned the most initially.
So do we plan on socializing during the year, the benefits of this to the public?
Chief, you want to answer that?
So that comes in a couple of different ways. So continuing our newsletters so that the public knows what's going on, um, with the fire department. And they understand where we're adding benefits and, or excuse me, where we're adding services and how we're growing. Another part of that is through the social media posts and the communications plan that we developed to make sure that every time we do something with the money from the F B C or we do something that was an intentional part of our plan, that we let the public know and that we are communicating with them, hey, thank you so much. Remember last year when you voted for this, this is what we did with it. Because if, if we're asking the public to trust us with their funds and their, and their, the ability to spend their money on their behalf, they need to know how we spend it. So there's a whole communications plan built behind making sure we over communicate. And, you know, pat ourselves on the back a little bit when we, when we meet objectives based on the F B C and the, and the strategic plan.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. He's doing his job well. Uh, you don't get paid anymore though. Uh, one of the questions some people had asked me is, does that mean you're going to get more money? And explain to them maybe we should stabilize in our funding rather than having a whole bunch more money to spend.
That's correct. Uh, and we'll talk about the actual numbers a little bit more in more detail before the board, um, uh, approves the resolution at the November meeting. Uh, and this will grow in, uh, the following years because we'll have history behind us and we'll have more data. We'll be able to actually quantify, um, residential versus commercial and everything else. But this is our first year. We've not done it. We've not had it. So, um, this will evolve.
Appreciate.
Do you know who, uh, will be on the board or the committee that they petitioned to?
Yes, that will all come. We'll talk about that at the next meeting. Um, I, I believe it, Kelsey, can you answer that? Is it comprised of administrative staff and commissioners?
The initial review will probably be Joe, myself and Sean Nichols. And everything will go to the board for a final review.
The actual petition process will be very well publicized, um, and discussed with the board. Um, we have a whole timeline on, on this that carries us all the way through, uh, March of next year. So when we get to that process, we'll educate and inform.
The first year of the plan going into effect will probably get more, um, more petitions than.
Yeah.
They'll gradually fall off.
That's what we think is going to happen.
That's because there'd be pay attention to. See their taxes.
Right.
Thank you, Director Ganem. Any other questions? Thank you. We're going to move on to item nine, the M I H update.
Chief Deffinba is here this evening to give an update on the M I H program. And as, as she gets ready to share some of her data, um, I don't want to, I don't want to steal her thunder too much. But just when we look at call volumes, always keep in mind that call volumes are not the be all end all measurement of M I H. Because at some point in time, you're going to have a, you're going to find the situation where call volumes have stopped decreasing. Because it's very hard to measure the call that you prevent. So Chief Deffinba.
Good evening. Hey, so I wanted to first give you the numbers for M I H since they started up and running in July. So total visits, in other words, where they've gone out and knocked on people's door or talked to them and had a face-to-face with them is a hundred and thirty-four. Out of those hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and twelve are considered successful where the people were willing to meet with M I H, talk to them and see how they could be redirected. So we would consider those successful, um, visits. They've also had three hundred and seventeen coordinated calls where they're working with people over the phone to help to get them to the resource they need or help educate them. Um, we just started the added to scene as a new ability of the M I H crew. And so they've only been added six times so far, but they continue to research, uh, receive a large amount of referrals from the crews over the E S O tablet. Also, uh, total contacts, five hundred and seventy. So they've been busy while they've been moving through this. So the calls that I'm showing you up here would be our high utilizers. Um, and this is just some of them. So for the higher numbers in the first column, that is January to June numbers from those individuals. So each of those I D numbers represents an individual patient. You can see where the monthly averages were laying with all of these patients and where we ended up after M I H has worked with them. So there are a couple up there that are not a decrease. But there's not always opportunity to help people help themselves. So that is where those numbers are coming from. The total number of calls a month for the eighteen callers that we showed you initially was fifty-four point two over the first six months of the year. And after meeting with M I H, we've reduced that down to twenty-four calls from those individuals. And I realize that's over four months, not six months. But I want to give you a couple of stories that go along with that. The first call that's highlighted in yellow where twenty-five calls, January to June, seventeen calls, um, July to the end of this month. That individual, they actually have been working with he and his wife both. They were able to coordinate some appointments for that individual. He had, he was an older gentleman, had some fall risks, had had a surgery, um, was not taking care of himself properly. They were able to set up an appointment with his surgeon that the gentleman said they were welcome to attend with him. In going through that appointment at his surgeon's office with the patient, they were able to identify some of the needs that would be able to help the patient. And they now have the patient placed in an adult family home. And they've had zero calls for that patient since that time. The second one that's highlighted at the bottom, that gentleman is in his forties. Obviously he was a frequent caller. Um, they met with that patient and educated him. And not only that, but they identified the fact that he was overwhelmed by trying to set up his appointments. They were able to set him up with this therapist for some appointments as well as a couple of other types of doctor visits that he needed. And since that time, he has not called back. So those are a couple of the stories that let us know the effectiveness of M I H. And we can see a difference in the call volume in these particular calls. I just pulled our top, top group of callers at this point. And, um, hopefully the call reduction in just these will let you know. Because like the chief said, there's no way to know what calls we don't get anymore. Um, they also go out and meet with people that maybe the crews only seen once or twice. But the crews have identified a deeper need for that particular patient than fire response is able to provide for them. And they need further care and further coordination of care. So there are some really great stories in there too. I've tried to share a couple of the stories each month in the monthly updates so that you can see where they're really helping people. So that would be all. Do you have any questions?
Mary Fuller?
Certainly the, just, I mean, the, those first months, you've seen something that, uh, all of us, you put numbers on it. I have been convinced that something like this program would decrease the frequent flyers. And, you know, with numbers like that, um, fifty-four down to twenty-four is, uh, you know, you, you can't deny the statistics. You, you're accomplishing what, uh, the goal.
Yes. Yeah. The M I H team, um, I'm very proud of them. They're doing a great job. Um, they are a joy to work with. So I'm very thankful to have that team in place.
Have you had any feedback from, uh, hospital or anyone else outside the program or knows of the program?
Yeah. So part of the M I H team establishing to be effective is to work with our outside resources beyond just the moment, but to develop some relationships within those groups as well. And the hospital is one of those. There's also multiple large agencies and a couple of adult family homes that we are working with. So, and the adult family homes is where I'd like us in twenty twenty-five. I'm hoping to put a little more focus into our adult family home education. So I've been tackling a couple of things as I go along when they come up. But I'd like it to be more proactive and less reactive. So that is one of the areas I would like to expand and reach out into.
Um, and do you have any, uh, coordination or contact or working with, with the police? Uh, they're probably seeing some of these frequent flyers too.
Yeah. So right now, Federal Way has three mental health providers that work with them for crisis calls. And Des Moines also has a team that works with them. Des Moines is expecting to end their program in the end of December because they are grant funded and that grant did not renew. So I will be reaching out to Des Moines, um, once we have a second team in place, if we are able to do that. With one team only, honestly, there's more than we can keep up with right now, just in what we are currently doing. So we don't have the ability to expand out at this point. If in the future we're able to expand our team, we'll be able to look at working with Des Moines and Federal Way, should they not have their own team available.
It would be interesting to, uh, put a financial impact. Uh, but that would probably require many months to, uh, assist prior call volumes or in some other method.
Yeah, there's definitely a financial impact that would have to be taken into consideration and worked on ahead of providing service with them necessarily.
But if the numbers alone now are, make it very worthwhile.
Yes, it does.
So on the, and you talked about the reporting, the crews reporting to the M I H program to get the people. You talked about the crews reporting to M I H program to get the folks in the M I H program. Is there feedback that comes back to that crew?
Yeah. So I think, um, our crew, our M I H crew is doing a really good job. If the crew has reached out to them directly, they are doing a good job of updating the crew. Like once in a while it's, sorry, they're not willing to work with us. We did make contact. And other times it's, hey, we've reached out to this person. We are working with them. And if they have a successful, um, exchange with that patient, they will update the crew with that. So, and they will, they will email the entire crew if they have the entire crew information.
Okay. Thank you. Bishop Burris?
Um, it's more a statement than a question. Um, I think it's really easy for us to, to look at the numbers and woo-hoo, our call volume is going to go down. And, and that is a really great thing. But we also have to remember that every one last call they make is their standard of living just got better because they don't have to call us. And in the end, that's really what we're kind of about. And I hate to see us obsess too much on, oh, we're going to go on less calls. We have improved the standard of living for that person who does not have to call us now.
Yes. And that is the key piece of the program. And honestly, our call numbers in this district are going to continue to rise every year, regardless of where we make the impacts and the less calls with the frequent utilizers. So.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks, Chief. Thank you. Now to item ten, Ms. Jeter T. Report.
Uh, good evening again. So the commissioners have, uh, October twenty twenty-four's, uh, staff report. A couple of things I'd like to point out in the staff report. Um, we are seeing an increase to staffing.
We are seeing an increase to staffing on the line. We're seeing more bodies on duty on a more consistent basis. So that's a good thing because of that. It helps us spread the workload a little bit. It helps us to, to have a few more resources and service. Which is great, but I also want to make sure the commissioners are aware that every new hire brings a lot of work with them when it comes to J T C and training and education and mentoring. So some, some positive impacts on staffing, but it also does bring a little bit of work with it. You'll also notice in the packet, the Lieutenant Willett has been appointed to the Fire Marshal's Office, so congratulations. It's a bittersweet because we know that Roy is leaving us. So having, having Lieutenant Willett slide in is great, but it is a little bittersweet to have Roy leaving us. The budget process is going forward, you, you heard Commissioner, excuse me, Director Gano's presentation this evening. Sitting through the budget process was very enlightening. It was great to see our individuals coming forward and making proposals and advocating for their programs. We have a very unique budget process in that. People responsible for programs and major responsibilities come forward and present their budget. And that, and everybody gets an opportunity to see what's going on and what the priorities are. It's a very unique process and I think it's very beneficial to South King. And then lastly, just that our U S R members that deployed are home safe and sound. They're coming trickling back onto shift, so we're happy to have them back and we're grateful for their, their service to the community and to the communities of the South. So if, with that, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I got an email that's talked about an all personnel group. That I'm a part of, what is that?
Well, all personnel is all, everybody in the department. However. I don't believe the commissioners are normally part of all department personnel. You have your own group email address, so we'll double check on that.
Okay. Don't want to miss anything. I'd like to point out, maybe it's not, I couldn't figure out where else to bring it out, but. Eric Quinn and his, and his father Joe produce a firehouse lawyer every, every two months. And this particular one I thought was really had a direct application for, for some things we, we deal with. One of them was statute of limitation on wage claims. Well, we meet that, so everybody got their compensation for the, the long negotiation period. Now, the other one was. The driver. How did you? How'd you title that? Sorry. On driving emergency vehicles safely and training. It details what's needed for, for training, a complication site and lists and things that. I'm sure we do, but I guess I'm just pointing it out, the number of. The Washington Administrative Code requirements specifically, and then. Some things that should happen on a response. It's quite interesting and it has, has a lot of value, I think, to the department. And just checking to make sure everybody has taken a look at it. Has to do with driving and.
I'm very familiar with the publication. I believe it comes out monthly.
Yeah.
Correct.
Anyone else? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item eleven, October budget.
Okay, good evening again. We are through the month of October and we are right on target. This time of the year, we'd expect to be at about eighty three and thirty three percent. And we are at eighty three and two tenths of a percent for the year. So we are under budget by thirty one hundredths of a percent. So we are, couldn't get much closer right now at this time of the year. Happy to see it. And tonight, Finance Supervisor Kelsey Barrett is here with the particulars.
Okay, so we have mid-month utilities totaling forty two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty seven cents. Accounts payable warrants totaling one million, five hundred and two thousand, sixty one dollars and forty seven cents. Payroll direct deposit totaling one million, five hundred, forty four thousand, eight hundred and ninety nine dollars and one cent. E F T P S totaling three hundred, twenty nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and ninety one cents. Our medical claims processed as of October twenty second totaling two hundred and forty thousand, sixty five dollars and seventy five cents. For a total approval of three million, six hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred, seventy four dollars and fifty one cents. Thank you.
I'll move approval of the vouchers.
Thank you, Commissioner Gates, I was looking for one. I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Gates for approval of the vouchers, seconded by Commissioner Burris, any other discussion? Here and seeing that, all those favors say aye. Aye, thank you, passing out. We are down to item thirteen. So the board convenes executive session per R C W four two, forty two point three zero point one one zero one I. To discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters related to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which agency. The governing body or a member acting in its official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding discussions likely result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Action may or may not be taken after executive session. Join the board, the executive session will be Executive Secretary Lori Perry and legal counsel. At this time, we recess for two minutes to get everyone transferred into executive session. We just paid executive session last for about thirty minutes. Action may not, may or may not be taken after executive session. At the end of executive session, we take two minute recess to get everyone transferred back over to regular meeting.